Tootie ties in place. Are we ready?
Yes.
I call to order this, the January 2022 Meeting of the North Liberty.
Twenty-four anyway.
Twenty-four. January twenty-two, twenty-four of the North Liberty Library Board of Trustees. All right. Agenda item number one, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? We do not. Then item number two, public comments, seeing no one in the gallery? There is no public comment. Item three, approval of the December minutes.
Which you all got late today.
You all.
I knew you got them late, so.
Yeah, but I just forgot to put them in the packet until Scott caught me.
I have a copy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve December's minutes.
Right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Hearing all in the affirmative, the December minutes are approved. And now we come to our item number four, our staff introduction and trailing. And I'd like to introduce Kayla Hudson.
Hudson.
Our youth and teen librarian.
Beautiful. So hi, I know most of you. As Scott said, I'm Kayla Hudson. I'm the Youth and Teen Services Librarian. I use she/her pronouns. And I've been in the library for five years now, and this is my first time in this room, shockingly. I'm going to be talking about working with community organizations to support youth development and community volunteer work. I first want to talk about our Joy Group, the Junior Optimist Club. Does everyone know what that is vaguely?
I'm familiar.
Okay, so it's the youth counterpart to the Adult Optimist Group. It's specifically designed for fourth to eighth graders. We started as a club in March of twenty-two. And we work, the Adult Optimist Group is currently working to create a club for the high schoolers at Liberty High, which is really cool. But their goal is to complete projects, do fundraisers, and better the lives of the youth of North Liberty. Kind of how the Adult Optimists do it. It also gives them the opportunity to gain life skills like leadership, money management, et cetera. You can kind of see my slides. I have a bunch of pictures of them at their conference, as well as working on city slate events. The bottom one, the bottom middle, is them at their meeting. We meet twice monthly, and they're just a bunch of goofballs. And yeah, so here's some more pictures of them because they just take great pictures. They are called the Jumps for Joy Club. It's just us making plans sanguinely, which they came up themselves, and it's fantastic. But yeah, it gives them a chance to collaborate with their peers. It is a great opportunity for them to make friends. We have kids from both ICCSD and CCA. And it kind of works as a mutual support. They kind of work as my tag group, our teen advocacy group. And then I support that club as a staff member. And I didn't say this at the beginning of my slides, but this is a scaled-down version of a conference proposal that I'm working on. So we're running a survey of all of our volunteers at the library, our youth volunteers at the library, and our Joy members. So I currently only have Joy members in here. But our preliminary data is that most of them have volunteered outside of Joy, most at our library. And most of them are engaged in school and recreation activities. And all have expressed, which is here, that the library engagement makes them feel more connected to the community. And I had to include their exact comments because it's very tween language. My favorite is the last line, "Making new friends lol and meeting new people and getting involved through library programs." It's, they are amazing. So in pursuit of youth development, we've started and continued various projects. Our outreach efforts with youth include regular visits to the school. We meet weekly at Liberty for their Liberty Time, which are the two on the side. We made pokeball, we make things from pokeball terrariums to decorate cookies. We also do engage with our local elementary schools and also work really closely with Liberty leaders. The bottom pictures is our banned book panel that we did, which was very successful. More programs, because I do a bunch of programming. We do annual, we annually go to the Kirkwood Steam Institute program. And that's the bottom pictures. And I don't know what I'm saying about that.
Remind me how many kids you guys saw this year? It was a lot.
It's a lot. So I personally did twelve classes where we had three-hundred-and-twenty-something kids. But they meet over two days. Every single kid, every single seventh grader goes through that and meets a bunch of different STEM professionals. So it's a great opportunity to talk about what the library can do for them, as well as promote the, how cool being a librarian is. And then, of course, we work with the Youth Council. And so that's that top picture at Pizza and Politicians. But we also, we just did a drive for them. We meet with them and talk through a bunch of stuff. So that's a bunch of fun. And my favorite part of this presentation is you can see the correlation between doing these outreach efforts and meeting with these kids at Joy Club and their engagement with the library and that programs. So the top picture is our Lego competition. We did that in collaboration with the Affordable Housing Coalition. And we had fifty-two kids at that program. And seven of them came up and they were like, "You came to my school! And I had to come because it was so cool." And I'm just like, "I don't even remember your face because I talked to so many kids." The one directly below that, we had five Joy kids come to one of our just like regular teen programs that I just happened to mention in passing. I'm like, "Oh hey, we're doing this new board game." And they all showed up and I'm like, "Okay, that's interesting. That worked." And they were, they, the Joy kids also mentioned that they wanted more service projects in the library. And I'm like, "You're already doing so many service projects as part of your club, but I can make that happen." So we've been doing tie blankets. So this year, we donated the tie blankets to the Lantern Park in Correville. And most of those kids are Joy kids. I thought I skipped this one. We do, we partner with local organizations for programming. And we work as collaborative partnerships. Ignore the NASA Ambassador Program. It is a collaboration that we do, but it is not local. But so, yeah, so we partner with a bunch of local organizations like Cora, our Reading Therapy Dog, Music for Life. They did an instrument petting zoo. The Iowa Raptors always bring down their birds, which is fantastic. And we had an ambassador from NASA come and talk about the Webb Space Telescope. I mentioned Pizza and Politicians, so I had to share some pictures from this year. Is anyone not familiar with Pizza and Politicians?
Probably don't know very much about it.
Okay. I was gonna say, I feel like the city council probably knows it really well because I'm constantly making them be one of our politicians. So we, so it's an annual teen program where teens can meet with local Iowa legislators, like the city councilors, school board members, Iowa representatives and senators, as well as members from the Youth Council in with that partnership. And they learn about legislation, current political issues. They ask questions. I'm gonna blow your mind. They also eat pizza. But it just empowers our youth to be more informed and an active participant in civic life.
I. In case you want to know, I started that program when I was a teen librarian. So that's how long it's been going on. So more than fifteen years.
And it's still going strong.
There may have been a couple of years hiatus, but it's been, it's been an extremely popular program. And the senators and representatives always love coming if you can wrangle them.
It's more the teens.
And actually Kayla was like, "We can't get all the Zach Walls." And so I had been working with Zach on some stuff, so I texted him. I was like, "Dude, are you coming to this?" And he was like, "Oh, I'm gonna try." And then that night, I got a picture of him at the program to, to make sure that I knew that he had showed up.
Just ignore that. It's not skipping my things, but that's okay. We also partner with the Recreation Center to provide a host of programming, like city slate programs. We also outreach with the Recsters weekly over the summer. So that's what all those pictures are, is from over the summer where we just did a bunch of programming with them. And then they come to the library and check out books. And I included recbrarians down there because all of our library programming, our programming librarians meet with all the Rexster programmers, recbrarians. It's just very fun.
And Rexsters is that before, the before and after school program for the Rex Center?
That's a great point, yes. I'm also like, just like using library language and just random community center, assuming you guys know what I'm talking about. And I, of course, am always delighted to continue to rave about our youth volunteer program. It's sixth to twelfth graders, and they contribute an hour a week to the North Liberty Library. And they provide a positive experience to volunteers and enhance excellent library services, of course. And it gives them the chance to give back to their community, work on some life skills, and enhance their resume, as well as work on their silver court hours, as they usually need to do. And they contribute their time, energy, and talents. The top one is just like, gosh, what was that, like, three weeks ago? At our afternoon Year's Eve program, they dressed up as, they dressed up as mascots, which are from Paw Patrol, and they had then two volunteers leading them around. I wouldn't want to do that, but they loved doing that.
My daughter loved the Paw Patrol characters.
Yes.
Very nice.
I think the Olaf one's a little creepy, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the bottom one is one of our volunteers just cutting up old SRP t-shirts. We're turning them into t-shirt yarn. And then we're going to make them into dog toys and donate them. But the program's always incredibly full, and I'm always, people are always like, "I want to volunteer." And I'm like, "I'm next semester?" So my waitlist is like this long, but yeah. So through collaborative partnership, youth development, and of course, volunteer engagement, we're continuing to strive towards strengthening our community in showcasing the library as the center of this community and a safe place for our youth. And as I always ask all my kids, questions, comments, concerns, sassy statements?
Sassy statement. Toy cleaning should be higher on the list.
It shouldn't be the bottom.
It shouldn't be the bottom.
They do clean toys more often than anything else.
That's a good thing, though.
Yeah, we have so many toys in the library, and they all go in the mouth.
Of course.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
Awesome.
No questions, but super cool to see all the programming you do.
I love showing pictures of the kids.
Thank you. And Kayla submitted a proposal to speak at a national conference on this subject.
Yeah, and I should hear back sometime in the next few months.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number five.
Hi, item number five.
Reports from our director.
Yes, the budget is sitting very, very well. We are actually under budget quite a bit, or about seven percent under budget right now for this time of year. Those things all will, of course, level off and as spending comes up. But I, it's, it's actually good to see, and it's particularly nice to see that the, our, our personnel line is doing well because some years, that tends to be a challenge. I think some of that is just with the shifts in some of the personnel. But we've, I think we're, Kayla and Nick both started last year, so it's, some of them are, they're, the funding might be there for positions paid a little bit higher than the newer staff. But that is probably where some of that lesser amount is. And then we've just, with the part-timers, we've just been working really hard to make sure scheduling is, is done well. I don't have anything specific to point out. If you guys have questions, please let me know, but otherwise, that's where we are with budget. All right, shall I move on?
Yes, please.
All right, so just staffing updates. We did, first of all, the end operations. We just had the process for, finished the process this last week for our end of things with the budget. I, of course, put my proposal in in October. And then our city administrator came back and asked us to do some cuts a couple of weeks ago. And they were pretty significant cuts because of some of the stuff that's happening at the state level. Unfortunately, a lot of cities are getting hit pretty hard. So I was not sure what I was gonna do because I hadn't asked for a lot. And the cuts were more significant than what I would have asked for. But the, the good news was that we had, we found that our Johnson County funding that comes in was not earmarked. It was earmarked at about half of the amount that I actually, we actually received from the county now. Because our numbers from county resident use has increased, about doubled over the last five years, from four percent to about eight percent. So that means that those, that was a significant amount of money. So I didn't have to make the cuts that I thought I would. They were made up with that county funding, which was super helpful. I did still go ahead and go in and look just to be nice and play nice with the city, knowing that they were struggling. So I was able to make about another eleven thousand dollars worth of cuts to help with some of those shortfalls. And then this past week, we had our budget hearing with the city council, where we go and meet with them, and they ask questions. They didn't really ask me too much. You know, I tried to keep a pretty flat budget, so there wasn't a lot of requests in there that they wanted to know about. Just kind of wanted to know where our, where I had to make cuts. And probably the biggest cut that I made that I added that eleven thousand was a fifty-five hundred dollars that goes toward tuition for, for staff. And just told them, you know, I want to reserve the right to bring that back. But we don't have anyone who's expressed an interest in going back to school right now. So for the time being, that line can zero out. And then we all heard, or some of you heard, that Lindsay will be leaving us. This will be Lindsay's last meeting, which is very exciting and very sad. Lindsay's really cool, and she's gonna go work for Lego and Denmark, which is amazing.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I knew that you were leaving. I didn't know what you were doing. That's cool.
We have, already had two applicants come in. We just, they posted it a week and a half ago, and we already had a couple applicants come in. I haven't seen those yet, but assume hopefully that, because we don't have a meeting next month, that we might actually have someone in place by the March meeting. We will see how fast the wheels will turn on that. We will be sad, and we thank you for your time here.
Thank you, guys. It's been awesome serving with everybody on the board and. Love the library. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Then I just wanted to throw in the endowment. As I was writing the appeal letter last week, I figured I'd send, tell you the balance, which is sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four and some odd cents. That's actually great. We started at sixteen thousand back in twenty-sixteen, so I feel pretty good about it. I'd love to see it grow and grow and grow. We've drawn on it a couple of times over the years, and right now, it's actually down about sixteen hundred from what it was the last quarter, just with the way things are happening in our, in our country right now. So there you go. But hopefully, we'll see that bounce back. It just kind of waves back and forth. We do have a part-time opening that was unexpected, when one of our part-timers got another job. And so gave her notice that she got another position that was more hours. So we did some finagling. We, I think I told you guys last month that we had shifted one of our other part-timers to library assistant two. And so we have two library assistants who's in place. They're both new to the role. And then we are actually going to hire, even though we only have one opening, because we just keep struggling with their schedules. It's, most of our, our part-timers either work another job, are in school with fluctuating schedules, class schedules, or they work two or three part-time jobs. So a lot of them have come in thinking they could do more, and now they're maybe doing four to six hours a week. So we are just gonna hire two more, just to cover our bases, because it seems like we are continually scrambling. I don't think that we're the only industry that that's happening in right now. It's just across the board. I hear it from all over the place, so. That is one going on. We are taking applicants through the twenty-fourth, and I think we have over twenty already. And there's some really good applicants, so we should be sitting well. And then I just wanted to bring back up the discussion about the statement of concern again. I had an email exchange with a person from Key West. I think I mentioned them at another meeting. But they are actually going forth with discontinuing using a statement, or they call theirs a reconsideration form. But as they were doing that, they're, actually, we're looking at a form, and they kind of gave a summary of what the form could be used for. I just think a general form on our website, just sort of similar to what Iowa City does, that just says, "Here's your place to voice, you know, questions, comments, compliments, concerns, all of the above." And whether it's a piece of furniture that's not comfortable, you know, just so that it's a very general thing. You're welcome to bring this forth. I like that Iowa City is just basically, I like what Lolly Eggers, back in the nineteen-seventies, said about Iowa City, which was, "We bought the books, using our expertise to purchase them, so why would we consider removing them?" So I guess that would be my suggestion, is that we do look at doing that. What I'd like to do is go ahead and try to actually come up with a general form to share, just so you can see it before we, we actually take the step. But I would recommend that we consider just getting, taking the statement of concern completely out. That would mean a couple of the policies would also have that statement of concern removed. So I'd bring all of those in one bundle to you at the same time.
Need to make a motion for that, or can we just?
I don't think tonight. We will at the next meeting, because I'll bring it all together in March.
Okay.
I just kind of wanted to get, pass the recommendation off so you could think about it and have that on your radar for next time. And we'll add that as an agenda item.
I'd also, reading about this, other libraries that are, and at least one other library that has done it, they'd also, when they removed the form, then they created a video for their website where someone like Andrew and Kayla and, Jimmy Cricket's not here. Nick and Emily would talk about how the, the collection is created. And, and maybe how like Andrew, or, yeah, how Andrew uses the, the informatics that he gathers to call things, how things are called, how things are brought in, how it's based on not a subjective, political, whatever libraries are accused of when they, when they add material to their collection.
Diverse time in the collection, how does that work?
How does that work? How does that work systematically? And, and, you know, a video that's not yelling or, an opportunity for not yelling and not screaming at one another. That's one of the interesting things that I'd read when I was thinking about this.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I'm taking a quick note on that. That's a great idea.
It's not, they're not buying the books at random.
Right.
Yeah.
Or because they have a chip on their shoulder, a chip on their shoulder, or that they're trying to promote an agenda or anything that, that.
Did you, can you send me the library or the?
If I could.
Yeah, that's great. No, that's great. I will say, interestingly enough, I was, I mean, have been in a conversation, I think I mentioned to you guys at a meeting recently, that I was asked to potentially co-author an op-ed piece on book banning for the Des Moines Register. We're still looking for someone to be on the other side of that coin, just on the other side of the political aisle, because we'd like to be a balanced piece. So I reached out to someone that I was hoping might be willing to do that. And he's considering it, and I have to send his response to the folks that I'm working with on the other side of that to see what they think about his response before we decide that, because he had some ideas. But he also sent me an article that was basically, "Are books really being banned at the highest, high rate that we think they are?" And the one thing, I was like, hmm, but it really, what the article was about was the imbalance in some of the collections that they looked at of larger school libraries that had a lot, had a lot of books on Democrat leaders and hardly any Republican leaders. And so I went through all the.
Like biographical type stuff or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I went through the top like six or seven titles, just that they, he found very few collections that had them in the schools. So not public. And I checked, and we had all of them but one. So I was like, phew. So my response is, that's, then we have some educating to do of our own profession as well. Because that, there shouldn't be any reason why those items aren't available at a school library if they're going to have counterparts. We may not love them on either side. We may not agree with everything that we, we purchase. But there's a reason we, if we're gonna offer a balanced collection, we, we need to step up and offer it. So I thought that was interesting. It was actually a really interesting article. We had a good conversation, email conversation. So we'll see where it leads. But, so yeah, so I'd like to bring that back to you guys in, in March. And then professional development-wise, I just, I'm going to be speaking, or going to be attending a really exciting leaders, it's called Library Leaders Gathering in Miami next month. Then I found a friend of mine, colleague of mine, who works for the Digital Public Library of America, apparently is responsible for my invitation to that. He told me, "I want you in Miami at a meeting in the fall," and I was like, "I don't know what you're talking about." And sure enough, I got an email asking me to go, and then I Foundation covers all costs for the travel for that trip. So I'm very excited. It looks like about the last year, it was about thirty-five library leaders from very large libraries and me this year. So we'll see, we'll see what that looks like. But I'm, I'm really excited to attend and see what it's all about. I don't know a lot about it, just beyond that it's just a full day and a half of learning and talking about library trends. And then I did not put it on here, but I just thought I'd share. I am going to be on the next, the following week. I was asked to speak in Nashville. I'm doing that on my own personal time. I'm presenting at a workshop for a group south of Nashville on libraries. The only reason I bring it up is because I found it really interesting. She asked to meet with me a couple of weeks ago, the person who invited me. And basically, we had a discussion about words that I cannot use while I'm speaking. They want me to talk about DEI, but I can't say the words, inclusion, diversity, or equity. They want me to talk about how everyone's welcome at the library. It's in Tennessee after all. I was sort of taken aback. We came to a pretty good agreement. They just want me to basically speak on practical application of library policy and building policy. And I'm happy to do that, as long as I don't have to water it down and not be, be true to myself. So I'm still going, and I'll probably get a few digs in where I can. So we'll see how it goes. But it was an interesting conversation, and they talked, she talked a few minutes about, or a few times she mentioned outsiders coming in. She actually was the one who invited me, and she was very excited, but the people above her apparently have a different viewpoint. So that was interesting. I just thought I'd share that because it was kind of funny.
Good luck.
Yeah, we'll see. And then just, I wanted to recommend a couple shifts on the policy review schedule. It shouldn't do anything to you guys necessarily. And that would be shifting the child safety policy to review in May, instead of wherever it was last time, because we really don't have much going on in May. And I don't see a reason for us to, to be reviewing the bylaws. There is no changes to be made in those. I mean, those are legal documents, so, so really, there's no point for them on being on the review schedule. So my, my recommendation would be to remove the bylaws altogether from the review. Obviously, you get them when you start an orientation, and they're there for us to look at if we need them. But I don't see any reason to have them on the schedule. So that would just kind of balance that out. And I don't know, I think the child safety policy probably will not be ready for much review in May this year. But that'll just get us on the regular schedule for it. So I don't think that has to be approved, as long as you guys are okay with it. I'll just make that shift. And that is all that I have today. Then there's just the different reports from everybody. I will tell you guys that last week Kelly was honored at the Think Iowa City and Greater Iowa City, Inc., Better Together Project for, it's called the Excellence in Action Awards. And she was given an award, a Bravo Award for her work on. And she was given a Bravo Award for her work on inclusive economic ecosystem, which was very, very exciting to see. The work she's doing is really something that I've been, that I wanted to do back in the early 2000s when I used to, when we just didn't have the capacity. And I'm just thrilled that she is able to carry out that work and, and really help the library have a place in that, in that world. So it's pretty cool. She was very surprised. It was really fun to watch her face change as they read off the list of accomplishments. And her, she just kept going. It was, it was pretty great. But other than that, I don't know if you guys have any questions. Everybody's busy as usual. December is a quieter time typically. They all, a couple of people mentioned that, but I didn't see any of them short on adding things to the list here. That's all I have.
All right. And let's move on to item number six, our policy review. The first policy, child's, library child safety.
And it is for this month, so there you go.
It's our first.
So there is just, really just a couple of recommendations for changing, and they're super, this one was just more semantics. The first change, just the verbiage felt clunky, so I just recommended that change. And I think that was the only one on that one.
All right, moving on to the service policy.
And service policy, I think again, so we are discontinuing the hotspots. I think I mentioned that to you guys earlier. Iowa City has also discontinued there. So Corahville has 70 hotspots left out of 80. We just had a meeting with Johnson County, our Digital Johnson County Group last, this, this week. It's interesting, they, from the sounds of it, they're very busy with them. But a lot of people take them, from what Ellen said, a lot of people take them out. And then even though they turn them off, they keep them until another one comes due, are available for them on hold. And then they return it back. So it, it seems like, at least from what they said, one person spends a great deal of their time trying to find them and track them down. And we just don't have the capacity to do that. Nor do, I just personally don't think it's a good use of our time. We can't be everything to everyone, as much as I'd like to. We offer the internet free at the library and wifi, and we offer devices for people to use. You know, at one point I had talked about maybe looking at laptop checkouts. But I feel like we'd just be in the same boat with those. And Iowa City said the same thing, that they were gonna discontinue that as well because it's just too much of a staff time suck. So we are going to get rid of them. They are all gone. I mean, we've lost all 10 of ours. But we had replaced most of them and they're all, the second set is all gone. I had initially anticipated having 25 by the end of this year, but we're just not gonna do that. So everything that you see in here is all about mainly taking out the hotspots wherever they're mentioned. And then just a couple of just places where there were some missed, missed words or things, just edit, just simple edits. But that is all that there is.
All right. And then is there more that we want to say about the statement of concern, or do we want to?
No, I just put it in there so you guys could take a peek at it, have it available for review.
Very good.
That is all that we have. As you can see, Taylor Swift's birthday bash was quite the resounding success.
I think it was.
Over 250 children.
That's amazing.
It was insane.
So that, yeah, I think I told you guys, they had that quite, that was all out in the library.
I remember I was out town, where I would have come.
Well, you never know, next year it might be a Frank Sinatra, Taylor Swift combo party.
I still love that idea. That'd be so great.
I don't know if the staff was as eager about it as I was. I thought it was a really fun idea. They were sort of like, "What?"
And I'm glad that her birthday next year will not be on Wednesday night.
It's always nice seeing you on Wednesday after swimming, when we come to see Matilda.
All right, so as a pair, do I have a motion to approve the two edits to the two?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none and a negative, the policies are approved for this year. All right. Do we have any old business to take care of? We do not. Do we have any new business to take care of this evening? We do not. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.